I'll call the city council meeting to order. Roll call. Okay, excuse me. Got to read my notes here. The invocation and pledge. Vice Mayor Rizzi will be doing the invocation and Councilman Schroeder will be doing the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you, Father, in the decisions that we make that will be affecting others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask that we be humble in our disagreements and that we never forget we are here to serve the people of this beautiful, beautiful community. Father, we also would like to thank you for the amazing weather that we've been having this week. We ask for your protection over all of our first responders, those serving in our military and all of their family members. We ask that they be brought home safely each and every day. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I plead with the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
I think I'm here.
I think you're here. Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Gremmell.
Here.
Councilmember Nessar.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Consent agenda. As a reminder, all items in consent agenda will be approved in one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the requests were made prior to the approval of the consent agenda and will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Okay. Words and presentation and proclamation. A proclamation designed 2021, a Get Outdoor Arizona. The City of Apache Junction recognizes Get Outdoor Arizona legislation resolution as an organized effort to elevate the importance of outdoor recreation for all residents in the state as critical element for health, well-being, and economic development. And whereas outdoor industry in Arizona is a major economic engine that brings jobs, prosperity, and wellness to all state residents, the outdoor industry employs 200, or excuse me, 201,000 people and generates over $21.2 billion in consumer spending annually. Whereas communities across Arizona recognize that outdoor recreation supports health, contributes to the high quality of life, and perhaps most importantly, it attracts and sustains employers and families. And whereas scientific research shows that both children and adults are spending more time inside than previous generations have in, excuse me, are increasingly distanced from nature, are engaged in less physical exercise, and at increased risk for poor health because of the subsidiary practices. And whereas quality time in the natural world encourages curiosity, provides hands-on field experiences, experimental learning resulting in improved learning across various fields of science. And whereas public lands representative a significant portion of Arizona's land base are critical components of a healthy outdoor environment that are low cost to access and ambivalent for all residents. I now therefore, I Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim 2021 as Get Outdoors Arizona. And I'd like to present this to Kelly Martin and Liz Langmott.
I can't believe they let him in.
Liz, you want to say a few words? Kelly? No?
Oh, come on.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. So just a couple of quick things. We just want to thank so much all the work that and opportunities that many of the outdoor recreation groups give. I know Mayor Wilson is going to mention a few of those here tonight when I'm done. This year, we've just seen a major increase in our trails and our open space as people get out. That's been the exciting news over this last year is that more people are getting out in nature. Wanted to bring your attention to a couple of things that we're going to be doing to promote the Go AZ throughout the year. But here coming up in March, we have a lot of really exciting things coming up. We are partnering with Florence in Queen Creek for a Tri-City Rec Connect Challenge where we're encouraging people to get outdoors and they'll log their minutes and the cities will kind of challenge each other to get more and more people out doing things. I have several flyers in the back lobby if people want to grab those on their way out. We have our Superstition Sleepover coming up at the end of this month. It'll be slightly modified, but still a great experience for families to camp and be out on our softball fields. And then we just have a ton of great things that are encouraging people to get out into Silly Mountain and several of our locations. We have a shamrock hunt that we're working on with the AJ Rocks Group here in Apache Junction and putting rocks all throughout Prospector Park that folks can go find, as well as some leprechaun hunt in Silly Mountain that folks can do as they get out there. Lastly, through the assistance of concerned residents, we have ramped up cleanup and other checking or making sure that our multi-use trail system and our open space is kept clean and preserved. Throughout the city, we are promoting a See Something, Say Something campaign. And I know we've mentioned that to you before, but we just have really ramped up putting signage out that lists our park ranger number so that if somebody sees somebody doing things that they shouldn't be doing, we have them on our dog waste station so that if people see people not cleaning up after their pets, they can call and get connected to a ranger right away. If folks are out on our trails or in the open space and they see either desert dumping, individuals who are camping out in areas that they shouldn't be, anything like that, they will have really prominent locations with our park ranger number. And Kelly's kind of taken the lead on that and been assisted by some really great individual advocates in our community. If you want to know any other ways you can get involved, I've left my card and Kelly's card will be in the back for the community members that are interested, as well as a lot of our events are back there. So thanks so much, Mayor Wilson, for making this important.
Thank you. If you're here representing a group or a trail user, a group, will you please stand in this aspect on it?
Me?
Okay.
Here I am.
President of the local chapter of the Backcountry Horsemen Association, group in 33 states, we're certainly on this program.
I want, I want to recognize the groups that, you know, in our community that have been heavily involved in, you know, maintaining or developing some trails and involved in the cleanups on it, and which is Superstition Horsemen's Association, the East Valley Backcountry Horsemen, which has been worked throughout the region and involved a lot in the national forests, the Superstition Mountain Promotional Corporation, which has also helped, is due for the Lost Dutchman Days, but also helped in many different activities around it. The Superstition Area Land Trust, they also helped build trails in, on Silly Mountain, as well as some of our other trails in the entire area. Lost Dutchman Marathon, Goldfield Ghost Riders, AJ Mounted Rangers, ATV Safety Institute, which is doing a lot of training and they've used the rodeo grounds for a training area, and multiple individual residents who assist in the cleanup and the activities around the entire area. I definitely want to say a huge thank you to all these groups that I had mentioned in the aspect on it. And I know I, in our community, appreciate all of it. I want to give everyone a round of applause, please. Did you want to say something?
I just wanted to comment to Liz that one of the outdoor events that they had just started was the Kite Festival, which we've been talking about. And this year was the first time they did that, and it was such a great turnout. Just another example of a different way to get outdoors and have some fun with the family. So thank you, Parks and Rec for doing the first kite event, kite flying event.
Okay. Announcements of current events from the council members. Braden?
So, over the last two weeks, I actually finished this on Friday, but I was nominated to attend the Basic Economic Development Course through the Arizona Association of Economic Development. As a council member, I was actually the only elected official in that course for this time. But there were 37 other people all across the state of Arizona, two in New Mexico, and actually one in Pennsylvania, all taking this course. And over the two weeks, we went through this book. So quite a bit, but it really opened my eyes to the world that economic development deals with and what our city staff deals with in terms of bringing in economic development. And that means more than, you know, just getting a Philiberto's. That really means head of household jobs and infrastructure and all of those things that we talk quite a lot about. And especially, you know, coming up over the next couple of years as we begin to work south of the 60s. So really just kind of got me in a excited mindset even more than I already am to work on that. So really great opportunity. And if any of the other council members have an opportunity to attend that, I would highly recommend that you do. Lots of great connections there. So, and then go ahead and move that, Matt. Just a quick reminder, we are meeting this Thursday, March the 4th, at 6:00 PM for the Founder Centennial Committee. Actually, earlier this week, yesterday, actually, I got a word from Stephen Herring from Republic Services. And Republic Services has committed $10,000 to that project. So we are starting to see some of our big corporate sponsors roll in. And of course, we're just under a year out from that. So any help from the community to plan that is great. So. And then just a reminder, next weekend, March 13th, is the Apache Junction Star Family Dinner. All members of council are invited. If you want to attend, please let myself, Danny Green, or Bambi Johnson know. This is a partnership event between both of our local VFWs, Post 9399 and 7968, to honor our star families, which are listed up at the top there. So really looking forward to that event. It's going to be a really great thing and a barbecue from 1 to 4. So I think that covers my part.
Gail?
I want to bring up that this Saturday is one of our hazardous waste cleanups down at Public Works. It actually starts at 8:00, but they close the roads, start to close the roads off because people line up. If you have batteries, paint, tires, anything, electronics, anything that you can't put in the regular waste, we can take it. The line gets long, it moves fairly quickly, but I advise anybody that has anything to get rid of, this is the time to do it. So right off a baseline at Idaho, and you'll see the line. Also, I got a picture sent to me today. The Community Development Corporation worked on another property cleanup this week where there were 25 tires. So we're doing a good job at getting through the code compliance cases that really need some help.
Robert?
Nothing today.
Kelly?
No, Your Honor.
Tess?
This is Braden's, but he asked me to do this. This, this Friday and Saturday, even though Saturday isn't Friday, it's called First Friday. Starts on Friday from 4:30 to 7:30 in the evening over here. What do you call it?
Phelps and Apache Trail at the.
Phelps and Apache Trail, right over where the tire place and everything is. There's vendors, there's, if you like to look at old cars and things, there's a car show. There's come out and join your community members this Friday, and then all day Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 is this Friday. And it's every month, usually on the second Friday, which is the First Friday. Next. Okay. Al asked me, Al Bravo, our PIO, asked me to bring these up again. I did the last time. This is a Chamber of Commerce program, Spring Into Savings. And what the Chamber did is they got a grant, and they took the money that they got from the grant, and they went out and got businesses to sign up. All of these businesses that you see on this list. There's a dozen, dozen and a half here. And they got $400 for each business, and they went to those businesses and bought $400 of gift cards. Now, if you, between now and May 1st, if you go shop at any of these businesses that are on this list, and then if you spend $50 or more, or if you have a combination of receipts, if you shop there once, two, three times, and take totaling $50 or more, take your receipts to the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber will give you a $20 gift card, and then you can take that $20. So you spend $50 and you get $20 back. You can take that $20 and you can go, or the $20 gift card, and go to one of these businesses and spend $20 for free. So don't forget. The next thing is also for the Chamber of Commerce. This is a new program that the Chamber has initiated. March is Women, National Women's Month, and this new program is the inauguration of this Women in Business. They are having a speaker series, and the first one is coming up this Thursday at 11:00 AM. It's going to be virtual. You'll have to contact the Chamber for any other specific information. They also will have a mentorship program that they will be starting and also in sometime in the fall. It doesn't say exactly when. They will have a Businesswoman of the Year event. So any women who are in business who are interested, please contact the Chamber about this new program that they have. And the March mixer for the Chamber, they have one every month. This one is March 18th. A note that they are usually held in the evenings, but the time is different. This one starts at 11:30 for a luncheon. So, and it's also going to be virtual. But if you're interested in the Chamber of Commerce is mixer, monthly mixer, contact the Chamber. Excellent. Gosh, that's a tough act. I just attended a boring old budget session with the mayor and Councilmember Tess and Councilmember Gremmell. It was very informative, though. The breakout sessions were good. I ended up getting disconnected from one of them, but it was, it was very informative. So.
Okay. I've got a couple here. First off, for the Rangers, or excuse me, it's the, I lost their name, the Superstition Mountain Promotional Corporation. They are doing, they've been primarily involved in Lost Dutchman Days. And of course, as everyone knows, Lost Dutchman Days was canceled this year. But they have been a contributor to a lot of our events throughout the community, helping the, I'll say, different activities, different kids, organizations. And so for help them to raise some funds, they've decided to do Brat Fest on March 20th from 11:00 to 4:00. And it's going to be at the VFW post. And it's, will help them out as they, will raise money to still continue on to their different groups that they give and help out in our community. So I encourage everybody to go out and be involved. On Saturday, the 20th, also, the Pinell County Junior Livestock Show. It's actually on the 17th at the Pinell County Fairgrounds, which is located in an 11-mile corner just south of us, considerable distance. They have a, going to have a livestock show. We have some local young individuals that are involved with the 4-H Club, which is the Apache, Apache Junction Group, and they're called the Country Kickers 4-H Club. And they are going to be down there doing, being part of the show. And then on the 20th, two of these lambs that are being shown right here are going to be going up for auction. And they're encouraging people to come out and, you know, participate, view, as well as try to see if they're, you know, would like to buy one of these animals in this aspect. The young lady there has written me a nice little note here, I should show it this way, saying that she is heavily involved and loves her animal. Her animal loves to be hugged, and says that when I sell it, I am going to use the money that I raise from that to buy my next project. So it's a continual effort on their part. And I encourage people to go ahead and go down to the Pinell County Fairgrounds and, you know, at least observe on the 17th. And then also, if you're interested, go buy one of these animals on the 20th. Okay. City Manager's Report. Bryant?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Bryant Powell, City Manager, we're very happy to have you with us tonight, Brian O'Neill, Executive Director of the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Authority, of which we're a member and have been now for six years. And when you think about economic drivers and where folks will be able to work, this is a big piece of the puzzle for Apache Junction. So Bryant, if you'll come on up, we have with him Ryan Smith, who's also with the Airport Authority, who have joined us. We'd like to turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Bryant. Good evening, Mayor Wilson, Vice Mayor Rizzi, members of the council. Thanks so much for allowing us to come tonight to give you a brief update on all the great activities going on at the airport. You know, as I look around the room, I have to say, I think Apache Junction has become one of the most active and involved owners of the airport over recent years. And I want to commend you, whether it's board members, city council members coming out for tours and updates on all the great projects going around. Mayor Wilson, your leadership on the Board of Directors or the constant communication I'm in with Bryant and Matt Busby, really, I, we appreciate the interest that you've shown in the airport. And I think it's only going to be more important as you continue your incredible transformation. The airport is going to be adding jobs, high-paying jobs, high-wage jobs, and a tremendous amount of new development at the airport. And we want to work in partnership with Apache Junction to make sure that your employees, your future employees, your students are prepared to compete and get those jobs and be able to work right here in their backyard. Because as you continue to grow down towards the 24, you're going to be right in the airport's backyard. And I think now more than ever, our strong relationship is really going to pay dividends. And, you know, we look forward to continuing to strengthen that as the airport evolves in the future. What I'd like to do is give you a brief presentation. I'm going to go through it pretty quick because I don't want to take up too much of your time. And then I'd be happy to answer any of the questions. As Bryant said, we brought Ryan Smith with us. He's the Director of Communications and Government Relations. And he's here specifically to handle any of the difficult questions. So unleash them, and we will make sure that Ryan has the answers to those.
We'll hammer him.
Thanks. So for those of you that haven't been down to Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport lately, we're a 3,000-acre economic development project. It's just fortunate enough to have a thriving regional airport with three 10,000-foot runways as part of our infrastructure. We certainly play an important role with pilot training, with transient military activities, with a growing number of corporate jets that are based at the airport. And then also, we are a U.S. Forest Service base for firefighting in the, during the fire season. So we play an important role in all those areas. But tonight, what I'd like to talk about is I'd like to talk about our growing commercial passenger service, and then really get into some of the private development that's transforming the airport and will create those high-wage jobs that I talked about. So this is the growing nonstop roadmap. As you can see, we've got the Upper Midwest and the West Coast very well covered. We will continue to work on areas that we feel that there's an opportunity to grow service, whether it's more service out of Texas or looking at the East Coast, some of that longer haul flying. But even during the pandemic, we have fared fairly well considering many other airports across the country have certainly been extremely negatively impacted during the virus outbreak. So you can see here, this is our total commercial passengers, and the red line is 2019, the black line is 2020. And you can see after the virus outbreak in March, April, we were down 93%. And since that time, we've been, I think we've been doing a pretty good job working with the airlines, modifying the terminal to make sure that our passengers are safe and that the terminal is respecting social distancing. So where most airports in the country are still down 40% or 50%, Gateway Airport is down between 20% and 30% each month. And, you know, we think that as the vaccine is, continues to be more broadly distributed, we think that we're going to be one of the first airports to fully recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. And the reason for that is, is that we are, at this time, predominantly a leisure carrier airport. And what we're finding is that there's a lot of pent-up demand for family and friends to get back together after this long period of separation. So we think that we're going to be the tip of the spear in leading the country with Allegiant adding service and other airports, other airlines interested in coming to the airport. We think that we're going to recover fairly quickly, whereas some of those business airports and some of those international airports, it's going to take a little bit longer for them to recover. Speaking of new service, we're proud that even during the pandemic, Allegiant has announced four new destinations that they will start in the first half of 2021. You can see on the screen, Houston started on February 11th. You know, it's interesting, we have beautiful weather here. If you remember back on February 11th, the weather in Houston wasn't easy to attract people from here. But we're certainly noticing an uptick of people from the Houston area that are coming to the airport through Gateway Airport to access the region. And, you know, we're encouraging them, as you'll see later on, we're encouraging them to come to wonderful destinations like Apache Junction and enjoy all that this wonderful city has to offer during their trip. Another flight that we are proud to announce is that Allegiant will be, has added Traverse City, Michigan on February 11th. And then on May 27th, they're going to add San Diego. San Diego, four days a week, Thursday, Friday, Sunday, Monday. We think, this is the number one city where people will corner you in the supermarket and say, when are you guys going to get San Diego service? Well, this is, this is where they can put their money where their mouth is. We really think that this is going to be a very successful new route for Allegiant, and we're encouraging everybody to tell their family and friends about the new service. So again, San Diego starts on May 27th. And then on June 2nd, for the summer, we've got seasonal service to Jackson Hole, Wyoming, which the advanced bookings on that flight has been extreme, have done extremely well. And we think this is going to be popular for the airport and for the residents in the, in the Phoenix East Valley. So we talked about promoting our members and promoting all of the great activities and destinations in the East Valley. This is a billboard that we have had up at the airport for several months now, and it's promoting Apache Junction. One of the benefits of being one of the owners of the airport is that we are committed to promoting your city and promoting our member community. So this is a huge billboard. If you've been up at the airport, in the courtyard between gates four and five, this is a prominently displayed advertisement, and we're proud we'll have that up there, at least for the next year. So really excited to finally get this up there. I know Al's been working on it for years and years and years. And for us to get that up there and provide that as a service, we're, we're excited to have that as a part of the partnership. And then because we, over the last several years, we have been growing dramatically in our past in our passenger activity, the airport, two years ago, began a food, beverage, and retail concession refresh, where we are adding a number of destination concessions in the airport, upgrading brands, bringing in new brands that we think are gonna be popular amongst air travelers. We've got a new Oso Brewery that has been very popular. We've got a Suara Mercantile that is not only a news and gift, but sells a tremendous amount of Arizona products, which is really cool. We just opened a large Panera Bread. And then as passenger activity continues to return, we're gonna be shutting down the copper plate, and we're gonna be putting in a Macao's Mexican restaurant and an infusion tea and coffee. So we're real excited for the upgrade that our concession program has taken. And so far, the anecdotal evidence from our air travelers has been very positive. Private development. The airport is blessed to have 3,000 acres of developable land. And if you've ever been out to the airport, 3,000 acres is a lot of land to develop. But we're real excited that we've got a pretty good head start on some important projects that we think are gonna pay huge dividends out into the future. The first, and I hope you've heard about it, is Skybridge, Arizona. Skybridge, Arizona is a 360-acre master development project. It's predominantly aeronautical land for development, but they also have some non-aeronautical land for development as well. And we've entered into a 49-year land lease. I call it a marriage. We are working closely with our partners, a 49-year land lease for them to develop this large parcel at the south end of the airport. And depending on the mix of uses, it could generate between 9 and 10 million additional development, feat of additional development. So we're real excited about this project. And they've actually got three projects that they are underway with or completed. The first is this 53,000-square-foot Flex Industrial Building. That's not an aeronautical building, but they've got several tenants that are interested in occupying this. This is just off of the airfield, and we think it's a great location for someone to come in and have both a front-end office area and a back-end warehouse area. So we're hopeful that we will be making an announcement that they'll have a tenant in this building soon. They've also got an 82,500-square-foot hangar that they've completed. They've got several tenants in it already, and they're looking for more of those large corporate-style aircraft that we didn't have the facilities to handle. So that really is what led to these private development options. So this is a wonderful new facility, changes the whole landscape of the south end of the airport, and they've been successful in attracting a couple of tenants, and I know that they're talking with many others. And then a couple of months ago, they had a groundbreaking, Skybridge is developing a dual-brand hotel, part of the hotel, there's 127 rooms. Part of the hotel is gonna be the transient one- or two-night guest stay, and then part of it is gonna be that longer extended stay customer that is looking to stay for weeks or months in the Phoenix East Valley. So we're excited for them to get underway with this project. They're working with the City of Mesa on their permitting and design, and we hope that they'll be in the ground during the third quarter of 2021. Another real exciting project is this, this is the new corporate headquarters. It's a 65,000-square-foot facility. It's got hangar space and office space. It's the corporate headquarters for a global company named APS. APS is Aviation Performance Solutions. And what they do is they train pilots, whether it's commercial pilots or private pilots or military pilots, they train them in upset recovery. So they'll take off, they'll take the plane into a nosedive or a tailspin, and they'll teach the pilots how to get out of those precarious situations. They've had as many landings as they have had takeoffs, so I know that they're successful at what they do. But this building will be done in April and really is a great addition to the north end of the airport. And then another really impressive hangar, this is a 50,000-square-foot hangar from Weta Ventures. They're entertaining several interested companies that are looking to expand their presence in the East Valley or base some aircraft at Gateway Airport. So we're hopeful to have an announcement about the leasing of this building in the not-too-distant future as well. And then Gateway East is our newest project that we are just getting underway. We've had a very successful promotional, viral promotional event that attracted more than 550 preregistered individuals to learn more about this project. This is a 400-acre solely non-aeronautical development. It sits right along Ellsworth Road, the expanding Route 24 and then the 202. And right now, we're going through the process of identifying qualified companies that are interested in submitting a request for proposal to be the master developer. So what we're really looking for is the qualifications. We're looking for a large land developer that has had success in projects like this, mixed-use projects, where there's gonna be a nice first-class office component, there's gonna be an industrial component, there's gonna be a commercial retail component along Ellsworth Road. So we're continuing to move forward. In April, we are gonna identify kind of the shortlist of the cream of the crop of those companies we think can do the job and handle a project this size, and they'll be able to submit a proposal, kind of taking a deeper dive into their vision and what their investment looks like and where they would start the development. And then by the end of the year, we hope to pick another master developer that we'll be working with to develop these 400 acres. And you can see down on the bottom left-hand side of the photo, this is also where our future demand-driven terminal will be located. Of the 700 acres over there, we're reserving 200 acres. And when the timing's right, when we're constrained for space and we can afford it, we'll move over into a new, larger facility over on the east side of the airport adjacent to the Loop 202. I've got a short video. I'll tell you, if anyone knows of my history, something's gonna go wrong, but if it doesn't, I will give Apache Junction all of the credit. All right, the jinx is broken. Thank you very much for that. Gateway East is an exciting project. We're really just getting started. But I want everyone here to understand, these are the places where Apache Junction residents are gonna be working in the future. And I think it's critically important, you know, we've got great leadership through Mayor Wilson on the board. I see many of you coming out to the airport. We need to strengthen that partnership so that the Apache Junction students and Apache Junction residents are prepared to apply and compete for these jobs in the future. And again, we look forward to working with you on that. Another real exciting project is on the north end of the airport, and this is the Gateway Executive Air Park. This is a 197-square-foot hangar complex. It is just finishing up with its permitting with the City of Mesa, and we will be underway with this project. They will be moving dirt in April, which is real exciting, and we look forward to the development of this. If you've ever come off of Ray Road down Sauserman, right between Cessna and Embraer, there's a large parcel of land, lots 11 through 14. This monstrosity is gonna take up that entire four-lot area, and we're real excited to get that underway. For airport and airfield infrastructure, our most important project going on right now is the construction of our new air traffic control tower. Our old tower was constructed in 1970. It's too short, the cab is too small, and it just won't fit the needs of the growing airport in the future. And so we're fortunate enough to be under construction with this. It's approximately $30 million. It's underway now, and we're looking forward to its completion in the summer of 2022. And this new tower is gonna be 55% taller than the old tower, and the cab on the top is gonna be 100% larger. So instead of four controller positions, we're gonna now have the opportunity to eight, and then this facility will take us into the future. So we're real excited about it, and, you know, I'm sure that you'll be able to start seeing it come out of the ground. We're gonna start the first precast panels coming out in April, and you'll be able to see that as it continues to rise out of the desert. So, you know, hopefully I'll come back and give you an update on that at some point in the future.
Will we get to take a tour of it?
Sure. I commit to all of you, you'll be able to take a tour. Quickly, this is, so in order to stabilize the ground for the new tower, these are 37 80-foot-deep caissons that they had to pour in December. And then in January, they poured a six-foot-thick mat slab that'll serve as part of the foundation, and this is what they'll erect the precast panels off of. So it's been a phenomenal project to watch. We're real excited. It's, again, it's gonna transform the airport and our ability to control air traffic. So it's a great project. And then finally, and real quickly, every 10 years, the FAA requires us to do an airport master plan update. Apache Junction was intimately involved in our recent airport master plan update, and I just wanted to show you a lot of the projects that we're gonna be doing over the next year, the next 10-year planning horizon, are improvements to the airfield. Because as we transitioned a military airfield to a commercial service airfield, it didn't have the taxiway connectivity to make the efficient operation to use all three runways equally. And as the airport continues to grow, it's gonna be imperative that we are able to use all three runways to evenly distribute aircraft activity across the region. So real excited to get many of these projects underway. Our steadfast partner at the FAA is committed to being there with us, and we're really excited about taking the airfield and really transitioning it up to the next level. So those are the projects that we'll be working on. And that's the update for today. I would be happy to answer any questions. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to come and give you a little update on the airport.
Well, this is more of a, not quite a question, but what you guys have achieved and what your vision is, is truly phenomenal. And I want to say, I speak for all of us when I say we're very proud to be part of this endeavor.
Thank you.
Yeah, as, you know, every time we go down there, the growth around that area, you can literally say this place is growing like a weed. We go down there, and it's just incredible to see the changes transforming all around. It's just, it's growing like, just, it's amazing how quick.
Yeah, it's exciting. I mean, the City of Mesa is doing some amazing things outside of the boundaries of the airport, but I'll tell you, we are blessed with a very talented and very knowledgeable team of experts on staff at the airport that are, they're really taking this airport to the next level. You know, we are, we are gonna be long revered as the most successful BRAC conversion from military airport to commercial service airport, just from, you know, the vision that Mayor Wilson and the other members of the Board of Directors have shared and the approach that the member communities are taking. We're real excited about the future.
Yeah, I wanna just make one comment, not from the perspective of sitting here on the city council, but from years ago, as a member just of the community, coming here, sitting in the audience. And I don't know how long ago it was, you'll have to refresh my memory, maybe 20 years ago, when the question came up, and I'd listened to everybody talking about joining Mesa Gateway Airport, and that's long before anybody ever envisioned that the city limits of Apache Junction, we couldn't make the concept that Apache Junction and Sandh, Queen Creek? Which is it?
Queen Creek.
We're gonna, we're gonna share a boundary down at the 24. That's how far south we're gonna go. So, you know, it's not like we're, you guys are 10 miles away and we have no connectivity. There is gonna be connectivity. Our people are gonna live down that way, that are living in Apache Junction, and they're gonna go there for jobs and all that. And I can remember the discussions about, you know, they want us to pay how much to become a member, you know? What does the heck does that have to do with us as Apache Junction? Well, yeah, like Robert said, you guys had a vision, and it's definitely, we're part of it, and I guess the smartest thing we ever did was become a part of that, so.
Thank you. We really appreciate your partnership as one of the owners.
Yep.
Kelly?
No. Just thank you guys for everything that you do. It's always fun to go down and watch everything. I've gotten to go down a couple times now, and heck, it's just fun to go down with the mayor and watch him. He's like a kid in a candy store every time we go down there.
Yeah, we appreciate your interest, and, you know, I don't think there's another airport in the country that has the unique fleet mix that comes in and out of Gateway Airport. And for people to show up and be excited, you know, I've been working in aviation for almost 30 years, and I still get excited when military jets come and do their training at Gateway, or we see an aircraft like the Antonov come in, loaded full of F-16s from Israel, and you think to yourself that, you know, this is Gateway Airport, and these things are happening, and they're happening on a more frequent basis. So we're real excited, and we thank you for your interest.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Your Honor, I, just, we kind of touched on this when I came to that, that tour, that one day. The billboard for Apache Junction, beautiful scenery of the Superstition Mountains. I mean, personally, I like to see more of a collage of like our rodeo grounds and Prospector Park, Flatiron, some of the more popular eating establishments out here, you know, things where if someone were to come in and say, "Oh, look, we could do this, we could do that, we can go do this." I'm not complaining, the billboard's beautiful. I just, as far as promoting things to do in Apache Junction, I'd like to see a little bit more of that in that billboard.
Sure.
That's an Al thing.
That's an Al thing.
Yeah, well, and I want to emphasize this, it's not my, it's not my airport, my terminal. It's your airport, your terminal, and we've been working with Al and others to look for these types of unique marketing opportunities, promotional opportunities within the airport as we continue to grow and more and more people are choosing the airport. So I agree with you. I think the more that we can tantalize an arriving visitor and pique their interest about, you know, exploring Apache Junction, I think the better off their trip will be.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming up here and doing this.
Yeah, as part of that, there's always been a tourism component for us to be a part of this. And so I just had one other item I wanted to share as we prepare for an every-three-year discussion. As far as our health insurance, our dental, and vision, we continue to be part of what's called the Arizona Metropolitan Trust. It is 11 cities and towns and two fire districts that join together as a trust to be able to purchase healthcare for our employees. And that has been a very beneficial management tool that we've had to help manage risk amongst the trust and the city. Some of the cities are Avondale, Fountain Hills, Paradise Valley, Buckeye Fire, Sun Valley, and others. These cities and towns, to be a part of the trust, every three years have to come to their city council and have a vote on whether or not to continue to be on that trust and to be a part and to be a member of it. Before we did this, we were a fully insured product, which meant that for the City of AGR, 300 employees would go out and bid services for health insurance. And to do that with just 300 employees meant that we took a significant risk if we had a bad year. And so what's happened with having about 2,000 or 3,000 employees in this trust, we've had a good balance of how we've managed healthcare costs. And so what I'm communicating is that it's our three-year turn. And so in the coming weeks, we're gonna have another opportunity to vote on an agreement to continue with the trust. And so just wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming, and that if you have any questions, please let me know. And Your Honor, that concludes my report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Public hearings, we have none. Old business, we have none. New business, presentation on an extinguishment request of the federal patent easement located at 1762 North Gold. Raquel?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Raquel Schatz, project engineer at the Public Works Department, here to discuss roadway easement extinguishment of 18th Avenue between Wagon Wheel and Goldfield Drive Road, sorry. easement extinguishment of 18th Avenue between Wagon Wheel and Goldfield Drive Road, sorry. So last night, it's my understanding that you guys had a lesson of 101 of the FPE extinguishments. So I fully came here to discuss one in particular, probably one of those areas where they showed on some of their slides here. So very quickly, this is taken from the city's GIS, and there's a couple of colors here that you see here. So the light green is the federal patent easements that we have surrounding all over the city. They're either in two and a half or five-foot acres, I mean, five-acre rectangles or squares. So you can kind of see the layout in this area here where they are the five-acre rectangular squares. The dark green are the dedicated right-of-way in which the city inherit, or we got as a trade-off, or something had to have happened, that the city requested this right-of-way from the individual property owners. And in the very bottom corner on the left-hand side there, you'll see red where there is already a roadway extinguishment in that area there. But this location in particular, we're talking about 18th Avenue between Wagon Wheel and Goldfield, it's the area there circled in the yellow. The requister on the applicant had submitted an application in which, in December, in which they submitted all the signed and notarized documents. They also paid the 350 non-refundable fee in order to do so. It's my understanding that they're also working with the utility companies as well, too, to get those utility easements extinguished as well, which is separate from this process that we're talking here about tonight. So as of January, I did receive all but one of, from the utility easements consenting to the roadway extinguishment being extinguished. And that also includes AJPD and as well as Superstition Fire and Medical District as well, too. So we had no objections at all as far as the utilities and all the emergency respondents for this extinguishment. So the purpose of this one is that it's to allow a pre-existing shade structure to remain along the FPE, which is on 18th Avenue. When that person purchased a property, this shade structure had been here for many, many years. Any questions? If you can go back to that area there if you'd like to see.
Anyone having questions?
I do, your honor. Just real quick, and I probably should ask this question last night, the $350 non-refundable fee, can you give the public an idea of what that covers, or why it's that, and a general idea of what that's for?
It's basically staff time. I like to say a recording of documents, but Pinell County's recording of documents is $15, so it's not much, but it's basically staff time.
Because it's time-consuming.
Most definitely, most definitely. Prior to, prior to accepting an application, it takes time for myself to conversate with the city engineer, with Public Works Director, to see if this is something that Public Works would like to support. If it's something that Public Works would support of, we then go back to the applicant, and we tell them, you know, this is something that staff does support, however, not all staff is in support of these measures. It is, it is a non-refundable $300 fee to submit, but ultimately, council has the final approval on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, did you have something else?
No, it's okay.
I just want to ask a few more questions. So Raquel, do you also go and look at the county recorder information on the properties involved?
Yes, so part of the, part of the application and the items that they're supposed to submit is supposed to be warranty deeds as well as affidavits, and actually, I've got their application here. I can kind of really quickly.
Would you verify that they are recorded?
Yes, that's part of, that's part of my, my time that I take into doing so before I actually send a request, or I go ahead and accept everything. I mean, I go through all this paperwork right here to make sure that everything's been submitted per our application process, which does, like I said, it does ask for title reports, Pinell County taxes, and stuff like that.
And it wasn't to put you on the spot, like Joe had helped with some of the questions, it's just to show there's, it's in-depth. It's not just a quick pick-up-the-phone. There's a lot of things that have to be done for this, and so that's, I just wanted to show that that was the reason for the fee.
And also, part of it also, too, like when I mentioned notarized, I mean, the applicant does have to go to the abutting property owner. So in this case, there is one that's to the south, that south property there, where they do have to get consent from them, they do have to get a document notarized, which waives the city of any diminishing value.
And also, you look for the actual federally patented easement that was recorded from the '30s up to the '50s, is that correct?
Correct.
And is that document kind of hard to find sometimes?
Sometimes it is. We don't have all of them, and the ones that we, we do have the majority of them, and the ones that we don't have, then I have to go to GLO, the state, BLMO, or BLM, sorry, and request those also. I have to do the research to find the document numbers, the patent numbers, to make sure that we've, that, well, and then we have them in our system, so.
And is it also true that sometimes the FPE language is different then from one FPE to another, whereas where it would say roadway uses versus public utility uses, and sometimes it doesn't say both, is that correct?
Correct. In some cases, it does say roadway uses, some cases says roadway and utility uses. In some cases, it even eliminates, it even keeps out a border of like the rectangle or the square. So in some cases, it would say all except the southern border of Section 21, northwest, southeast, northeast of the north half, or whatever else like that. So I mean, it's not always cut and dry, where it's all just, like I'm trying to point out, they're a rectangle, or in other cases, in the other side of the city, it may just be a square of a two-and-a-half acre. So there are, I mean, each one is almost individualized to, like Joe mentioned, either roadway, roadway and utility, roadway, utility and gas, you know, with exceptions and whatnot.
One more, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Just one, just one more.
Go ahead.
And is it also true sometimes the extinguishments, sometimes extinguishments aren't recorded, is that correct? And you would find, you could actually find it, or if they present it to you and it has no recording stamp, that's an issue also, isn't it, sometimes?
Correct. And in which case, then we do have to come back to council and re-present it to you guys. You guys, you know, take those measures all over again, has to go get rerecorded. Those then get sent to, I mean, as part of the, Pinell County does all their stuff, they map it, and they make sure that it's, it's correct.
Thank you, thank you. It, just to show, this can be a really complicated process.
It is, and no one, no two applications are the same.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, I've been here many times before in which, you know, with developments, the future developments that are coming and everything else like that, in which, in those cases, we do, when we buy or we vacate, which means we're giving the dedicated right-of-way, that we need to get appraisals. But in this case, it's something so simple that it's, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Any other questions?
Your honor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So, so there are two areas that are, where there are buildings on easements, the one, I see the one arrow pointing there. Is there another one up in the upper left-hand corner?
It's on Wagon Wheel Road, and in which this extinguishment is just for 18th Avenue.
Okay.
So the, what I think you're talking about is a container, which that can be moved, from what I understand. This, however, is a, it's just a, it's an RV shelter.
Okay, so that's strictly what we're talking about?
We are just talking about the RV shelter that is on 18th Avenue. So extinguishing this easement here would eliminate that encroachment.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Raquel, the owner wants to build a permanent garage. Is it going to be in that area that's on the extinguishment?
I cannot answer that, that's the owner's here.
We didn't hear that.
And that's hearsay from what I know.
Okay, one other question. The, what utility provider did not respond?
That's Apache Junction Water District.
Okay.
It's not in their service area either, but we do, we do ask them because in case if in future they decide to buy out the Arizona Water Company's portion of the city and become the main provider for the city, we do give them that option to provide us with any input.
Okay. And has the city made it clear to the owner that if this were extinguished, and if they build, and if any of the building walls or anything is in that area, and then the utilities wants to come and dig anything up, they could have to tear down their, whatever they build? They're aware of that?
Yes, they're aware of that. In fact, they've already, at the same time that this application was submitted, they're already working on the process with the utility companies individually to get those easements extinguished as well, too. And so with, with what they're doing, as well as what's hap, with this request tonight, that eliminates all the easements in the area there they can build in that 33 feet, as well as the property to the south of them. So it's not just, just for sole purpose of the one property owner, it's, it gives both property owners that, that chance to use that property that's considered private property.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
Okay, no, there's no questions, okay. I, this is a public hearing?
No, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, it's just a new business item, and so it's for discussion tonight, and I think you're going to bring it back on, oh, well, it's for presentation and discussion. So if the vote will come at a different, it will come back at a different meeting.
Your honor, I would like to propose that we, this is a new business item, that we bring it back.
Well, typically, if I could. Typically, it would come back. This is treated like a work session. So if it's going to be voted on, we would have to also say consideration of, so can't vote on it tonight, but it could be put on the next agenda. Correct, Raquel?
Sure.
Okay.
And that might have just been language that was just left off when we, when we had intended to come tonight, was, we had fully thought that we had it up for consideration, so apologies on Public Works' behalf for not entering that language in there, but I understand.
Okay, so we can bring it back, then?
Your honor, I do want to clarify that when we bring language in the public like that, we do want to say that it's clear for either consideration or not, and it's not. So, you know, my fault for not catching that, and we will address that and bring that back.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this something we can put back on consent agenda, or does it have to be back?
No.
Gotcha, okay, just wanted to make sure.
At the next meeting, in our next meeting, can we work on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
I apologize as well. Council direction to staff, well, we just did a direction to staff, basically, bring this back. Selection of meeting dates, times, locations, and purpose. The next regular scheduled work session is Monday, March 15th, and the next regular scheduled council meeting is Tuesday, March 16th, which this will be brought back on the 16th. Okay, we don't have to vote on that, all right. Call to the public. I'd like to remind everyone that the call to the public is a courtesy and not required by law at this time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Request to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues will be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and/or place the matter on future agenda for council discussion. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and I have two. First one is Mr. Rich Winters.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, I appreciate it, and council members. What was just gone over is our property. We purchased it a couple years ago. The, the building in question is not a garage, it's a shade structure. It's aluminum, and the wind blows through it, and it does have a roof. It can be torn down. In fact, I'm talking to some construction companies, because if you're not going to allow it, we'll get rid of it. I don't want to be an adversary. I feel like I am, and I don't want to be. We just purchased the property, we're innocent folks, and we hate to have overpaid for the property, but if we have to get rid of this, we obviously did. I think this thing, you know, probably worth 20 grand, maybe. So it's not a real garage, it's just a shade structure. I'd be more than happy, and I'd be satisfied with some sort of a document that we would gladly sign that says, in the event someone wants to build a road, we'll tear it down. It's not a problem, it's not that big a deal, you know? And I feel like it's such, for us, it's kind of a big deal, but looking at what you guys go through, I know we're small potatoes, but we don't want to be adversaries, and we will comply with whatever is necessary. But it just seems to me like it's a little bit strange that this thing's been there for 30 years, and now it's a problem, because it's really not a problem. And it's a very attractive structure, it's not a piece of junk. You can drive around and find plenty of them. I welcome you, as I did before when I spoke, come out to our house, we'll give you the tour, we'll show it to you. There's nothing wrong with it, I've talked to each and every neighbor, they think it's ridiculous. There's plenty of access to Goldfield Road. In fact, more access to Goldfield Road is a danger, because that road is a danger. And then for the folks that live right behind us, you know, to the west, there's plenty of access to Old West Highway. I have driven and walked that whole thing, and there's just no congestion whatsoever. But I do realize, talking to Larry Kirch, that, you know, who knows what's going to happen 50 years from now? So there again, we're with you on that consideration, but I hope that you'll be able to give us, you know, due consideration. Thanks for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Schroder? Oh, there you are.
George Schroder, 2444 West Virginia Street. I hope, I have not heard anything about a glide path from our airport. Hope it's not a quid pro quo, where whoever gives the most doesn't have the traffic over their houses, because right now, we're getting some, and we're probably going to see more. So we need to work on that. A serious consideration is, in our neighborhood, I've watched the police, I've worked with the police, worked against the police for a long time. In our city, I have noticed over the past few, since 9/11, really, where the police don't always look or attend to a small amount of pot. Fine, I don't consider it a bad drug, but there it is. Other drugs are legal. Our community is overlooking and going to overlook small misdemeanors, and the courts are telling them that they're going to have to. So today in Washington State and the Supreme Court have said that it is not a reason for arrest, detention, or a reason to go to jail. This is brand-new today. My concern is, in my neighborhood, I already called them, and they don't give a rat's ass about what I say. They ignore me, yet my, my rights as a homeowner have been completely negated. But yet, crackhead over here, the lady that we just got out with, 10 people in her house and a fifth wheel in her yard, for the 10th time in six years, there's something wrong here. They have more rights than we do. They've just been completely obliterated. Now, on one side, as I said, Mr. Hazel was competing with other people, to have people work for the city, that we're paying our fines and whatnot. I don't know if you remember that, but we've gone through that before. So that's going to alleviate that process. But the next process is, they're only going to take these people away. Anyway, it's negating our rights as a homeowner in our neighborhood. They really are. Because now they come back to their neighborhood doing the same thing that they that they always did, terrorizing their neighbors, yet the police feel that they're a danger, and they come and arrest them at gunpoint and bang shots with the SWAT, but yet, they come back, and we gotta deal with them, not them! Or they say, call the police. I call the police, so what? That's what I get. But if George Schroder does something wrong, man, it's wrong. I don't feel really picked on, 'cause I know other businesses and people that it happens to, but I'm, I'm one of their favorite targets, 'cause I don't comply. I don't have a god, I don't have a master. You're gonna, you're gonna figure that out real soon, and I'm going to help the city find their way out of this.
Thank you. Does the council have any requests for follow-up staff or anything? Okay, I adjourn this meeting, thank you.